Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, current time 9:02. If you'll join us, we'll call the meeting to order for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I invite you to join with me if you're willing. Gracious and loving Father, we come together this morning with grateful hearts for our many blessings. May we always seek opportunities to share our blessings with others, for we know that a blessing shared is a blessing squared. Father, we ask for your wisdom and guidance for this meeting and in all things that may become or become for this commission. In your blessed name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right.
I agree with that.
Once again, good morning. First item of business will be public comment, but in as we do public comments, this is a time for you to speak to the board. Again, we ask for decorum. We ask for your respect both ways. And that if there's any item you're here for, for a public hearing, actually today, we don't have a public hearing. So if you're going to speak to the board, now would be your time to do that in public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward and identify yourself for the clerk. Seeing no movement. It's a quiet morning. Okay, very good. Next item will be the approval of minutes for a meeting of July 9th, 2021. That's a budget workshop. And then the second set of meeting minutes is the budget workshop day four meeting, July 12th. Is there any corrections, additions, deletions? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Bart, second by Hutchinson. Comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next item will be proclamations. Proclamations for, first one is Resolution Number 21-333, proclaiming October 2021 as Manufacturing Awareness Month in St. Lucie County. Madam Clerk.
A resolution proclaiming October 2021 as Manufacturing Awareness Month in St. Lucie County, Florida. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. October 1st, 2021 is Manufacturing Day, the kickoff of Manufacturing Month to inspire the next generation of manufacturers and educate the public at large on the importance of the role of manufacturers. Play in our daily lives and the growing skill shortage despite the high volume of job openings in the sector. The Treasure Coast Manufacturers Association, the Economic Development Council of St. Lucie County, Florida, among other entities, have established a ready-to-work boot camps with our educators at St. Lucie County Public Schools to increase awareness of these career opportunities and to support school programs that provide the educational pathways to obtain them. The Board of County Commissioners commends and supports this important cause and the organizations involved. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, that this board does hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Manufacturing Awareness Month in St. Lucie County, Florida. The board further urges all citizens to join in recognizing the value of our manufacturers and the importance they serve locally, nationally, and globally. Global economies. Passed and duly adopted this 21st day of September 2021.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Bartz.
Second.
Second by Mitchell. Comments or questions? Would you please call a roll? We have a, just so you know, we have a commissioner who's coming in remotely. So as part of that process, to be able to acknowledge the votes, we'll be calling a roll call today.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Tesh, I'll be right there.
Oh, you don't have to move down. Chair, Mr. Chairman. Well, we have a proclamation for you, but the ink is drying.
Oh, okay. Well, that's great. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Pete Tesh. I'm secretary of the Treasure Coast Manufacturers Association and have a part-time job as president of the St. Lucie EDC. Thank you very much for making it aware that manufacturing is a vital component of our economy. While TCMA and its members struggle with supply chain issue issues as well as trying to keep the talent pipeline primed in their businesses, manufacturing is growing rapidly and robustly here in St. Lucie County and the Treasure Coast. Unfortunately, Jerry Jakes, president of the organization, is not here, but he does send his very warm regards. We know that the county commission is very aware of manufacturing because of the policies and the lightning-like speed that you take to help our employers, and it's gratefully acknowledged. So, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of TCMA, we thank you for recognizing, again, this vitally important sector, and we appreciate that, all that you do for us, sir.
And Mr. Tesh, as part of the manufacturing focus that we have made as a board for now, almost a decade, you know, we have a tool in the toolbox that we use, and that's tax abatement. We'll be talking about that coming forward over the next year or so, looking for community support. Has there been any ability to help manufacturing get off the ground and create a number of jobs and bring that investment to St. Lucie County because of the tax abatement tool that we have?
That was a very well-spoken question, Mr. Chairman, and the answer to the question is yes. And we have many great examples of the economic development partnership, our local governments working together, and particularly the county commission, in attracting and maintaining many of those companies. Pursuit, Maverick Boat Group, A1 Roof Trusts. We look at Natalie's Orchid Island Juice. We have many others that are ready to come on up, Oculus Surgical and Exel International. So advanced manufacturing is alive and well. And because of the assistance and incentive packages that the county commission put together, there's just been tremendous economic output as a result. I hope to share with the county commission in the next couple of weeks the economic impact analysis that was conducted on the projects that I just spoke of. And I think you'll be very pleased with the fact that your policies and the instruments of business assistance have worked very effectively.
Yeah, an important part of this whole thing, conversation, is that this is not a cash giveaway. This is simply about those manufacturers, those businesses coming here and making multiple tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars in investments. And they wouldn't be coming here unless we could compete on a state and a nationwide level. So I just wanted to share, make sure that the community was understanding what this is, what this is about, and why, you know, these manufacturers are coming here and helping create hundreds, if not thousands, of jobs.
Great return on our investment.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Tesh, thank you so much.
Also, I'd like to recognize the Vice Chair, Commissioner Mitchell. He responded very quickly. Some of our manufacturing employers are looking for close proximity or onsite vaccinations for the Delta variant and COVID. So, and having Mr. Spurber with the Health Department here is very helpful as well. But we appreciate you guys jumping right into the fray to help our companies get their employees vaccinated. So again, another idea and another great action. So thank you, Commissioner Mitchell.
All right. Thank you for that. Next item will be Resolution Number 21-334-A, a resolution proclaiming the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2021, as Constitutional Week in St. Lucie County. Madam Clerk.
A resolution proclaiming September 17th to 23rd, 2021, as Constitution Week in St. Lucie County, Florida. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. Constitution Week is a commemoration of America's most important document and is celebrated annually during the week of September 17th through 23rd. September 17th, 2021, is the actual 234th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution ensures the rights of every American and provides the framework for the administration of our country. Yet few know the date or celebrate its importance in any fashion. United States Constitution stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. The celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of American Revolution. In 1955, DAR petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th through 23rd annually to be dedicated to the observance of the Constitution Week. The resolution was later adopted by the US Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, that this board does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2021, as Constitution Week in St. Lucie County, Florida. Passed and duly adopted this 21st day of September 2021.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Bart, second by Hutchinson. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. And to collect the resolution today is Pat Blumquist, Carolyn Wilkins, and Lorna Hilliard. Also, all from the Daughters of the Revolution. Good morning. I'll take a picture and then I'll let you speak. How's that? All right. There we go. All right. Microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of County Commissioners. We wish to thank you on behalf of the Cora Stickney Harper Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. We truly appreciate this opportunity to share the knowledge and importance of Constitution Day. We hope that our community will remember and respect our Constitution and practice government as we, the people. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, before they leave the podium, are there any events that they're doing throughout the county, usually in the past, that they've been very good about?
Do you have any events that are happening? If you'll come and let us know. Thank you for reminding.
I'm sorry. At present, during the Constitution Week, because of the we usually do more outreach to schools, etc. We did do a presentation at the school board last month, so the teachers would have an opportunity to prepare lessons for this month. We also have displays at the Lakewood Park Branch Public Library and the Kilmer Branch, or the main library, Kilmer, of selected materials that would be suitable for youngsters of young age to high school age, as well as bookmarks that we give away and other kinds of things. So we hope that next year, when we have the COVID things under control, we can do a lot more for this important day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson. Next item will be Resolution 21-336, proclaiming September 15th across through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month in St. Lucie County. Madam Clerk, please roll.
A resolution proclaiming September 15th, 2021 through October 15th, 2021, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in St. Lucie County, Florida. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. Each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th through October 15th by celebrating the contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. The Hispanic Heritage Observance began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. It was enacted into law on August 17th, 1988 on the approval of the Public Law 100 through 402. The theme for celebrating Hispanic heritage in 2021 is Esperanza, a celebration of Hispanic heritage and hope. The theme invites us to celebrate Hispanic heritage and to reflect on how great our tomorrow can be if we hold on to resilience and hope. It invites us to reflect on all contributions Hispanics have made in the past and will continue to make in the future. It also is a reminder that we are stronger together. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida. This board does hereby proclaim September 15th, 2021, through October 15th, 2021, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in St. Lucie County, Florida. This board further encourages all citizens to observe this important month by participating in appropriate ceremonies and activities planned throughout St. Lucie County. Passed and duly adopted this 7th day of September 2021.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hutchinson, second by Mitchell. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am. And today to collect this proclamation is Nelson Merchant, as well as several founders and teachers of the Bilingual Teacher Hispanics in Action Group.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. How are you?
Morning.
Take a picture and then we'll go ahead and let you have the microphone. How's that?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Oh, I thought you were gonna come get in the picture. Gotta spruce it up. You did good. Here's your proclamation and feel free to give us some words.
Oh, yours. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the bar. Hispanics in Action was founded in 2005 with the purpose to offer free education programs and learning enhancement opportunities such as courses, seminars, workshops, lectures, and communicating this information to our network supporters. By the way, our website was redesigned after 16 years, thanks to one of our members. No money. Our founders, we would like to recognize today include Mary Dodge, John C. Hosler, Hector Mendez, Patricia Rebellon, Alicia Merchan, Jim Fonge Moi, and myself. Before the pandemic, we had an average of 15 volunteers, teachers who served approximately 15,000 students in 16 years of operation. Currently, our dedicated volunteers include this fine line, Flores Berens, and Allo, Luigi Ricard, Jim Fonge Moi, Yefereza Bamba, Marywell, John Hosler, and myself. Since 2005, our students have had the option to study English, Spanish, French, Italian, and German, free of charge. Advanced students attended monthly workshops about personal credit refinancing primary mortgage, how to protect your assets, and so forth. We prepare for permanent residence to become US citizens. Now we have 803 citizens, fully voting members of our community. They should have paid $1,200,000 if we had not helped them. We also provide children withdrawing classes, and obviously, we exhibited their artwork. During the pandemic, we continued in-person classes as much as we could, but started virtual classes about a year ago in the Treasure Coast, Hop Sound, in Florida, Naknuquet in Massachusetts, Ottawa in Canada, Chia in Bogota in Colombia. I would like to thank all the organizations that offered us classroom space free of charge to serve our community. Indian River Counter Library, St. Lucie Catholic Church, Savannah Preserve State Park, Holy Family Catholic Church, Blake Library, Hope Library, Morning Zeit Library, the Friends United Methodist Church, Port St. Lucie Botanical Garden, Holy Cross Catholic Church, and Golden Gate Historic Building. As one of the founders, I volunteer as a bilingual teacher and manager of the 16 years. Hispanic Nation prepared me for the USCIS interview. March, I became a very proud US citizen. After 20 years in this wonderful country. All this has been accomplished by all our members with no salaries, no grant money, free of charge to those being served only with the will to serve others and with the satisfaction of helping to educate and communicate and getting things done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Okay, that concludes the proclamations. We'll be going on to presentations in just a moment, but I just want to point out that there were a few items added to the last, at the end, at the last minute, so to speak. Most of them are contracts, one being the Employee Collective Bargaining Agreement, a resolution for parks and rec and impact fees, as well as agreements between Martin County, Okeechobee with pre-trial services, and agreements with New Horizons Mental Health Court, as well as the jail diversion contract with New Horizons and mobility fee ordinance provision that will be heard under the county attorney under Section 10A. Have there. Next item will be a presentation by Blake Sharon Foundation for the naming rights of the Tug Singleton with James Trident Oppenborn leading the gang. Better known as the Oyster Guy.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I want to thank you all for being here this morning. My name is Alan Schronen.
Come a little closer. There you go.
My name is Alan Schronen. This is my wife, Jo Lynn. We reside in Orlando, but we spent the past over 20 years in Hutchinson, North Hutchinson Island. I wanted to come down here this morning and personally thank this board and probably those before you that took the initiative towards conservation and improving the ocean we have had the opportunity to enjoy. We in this country, this county, are so unfortunate that you started a program to not only improve the environment, but to bring it back to life. And also want to thank Jim Oppenborn for introducing me to the opportunity to give back as well. My son Blake and I have literally dove off the coast of Florida from as far as south as Key Largo along the shores of Miami up to the shores of the Stewart Ford Pierce, all the way up to Vero. We've seen the shores that have beautiful coral reefs, to some of the shores that have nothing at all, just bare sandy bottoms. Just 21 months ago, my wife and I lost our son Blake. Sorry. Watching the sun come up this morning is a very perfect analogy to what we're all about to do with the deployment of Tug Singleton. Add light and literally life to a portion of the ocean at 170 feet that has only seen darkness and no life. Over the years, I felt called to do something impactful, if able, to our community and the ocean in particular, to give back to all she has given us in our family. Ladies and gentlemen, you have given us the first step possible to do this. We see the naming rights of Tug Singleton as a godsend. Given the timing, proximity, and the unique opportunity to create life in the same ocean Blake grew up in. Jo Lynn and I are simply a vessel, having been blessed to have formed the Blake Sharon Foundation, doing this in his honor and in remembrance of our beloved son. Please accept this check, not only as a token of our gratitude for this opportunity, but also as an initial down payment on a goal that we have to make many more and possibly larger and better impacts to our local ocean and waterways. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And it's a wonderful tribute as a living memory and a living monument. And James, Jim, would you please give us a little bit of background on the number of reefs, maybe, and what you're seeing out there? I know that there is some concern about Amendment 10 that just came through about the shrimp trawling off of the Okalina Bank. And because of your work, you're actually helping to proliferate Okalina coral on some of your artificial reefs. Is that right?
Yes, sir. Do you need me to take this off? Can you hear me okay?
Go ahead and take it off. Just don't breathe on anybody. Not kidding.
All right. Yes, we've had 60, I want to say 67, artificial reef deployments in the last 16 years. So we're doing okay. Reefs like this, like the Blake Sharon Foundation Reef, those make wonderful habitat. We're gonna sink this, the Tug Singleton, aka the Blake Sharon Reef, Foundation Reef, in 164 to 170 foot of water. That's deep enough that we'll get oculine corals. We've seen oculine corals growing on the deepwater artificial reefs, at least two of the reefs, over the last 16 years. We're hoping we have 32 artificial reef modules that we're gonna put on the Tug Singleton, and hopefully those will help recruit oculine corals as well. The amendment you referred to, Amendment 10, is past presidential order. It's now been codified by the South Atlantic Fishery Management Council. Just about every scientist I know feels that this is a bad idea. It would give the shrimp trawlers, the deepwater shrimp trawlers, the ability to trawl within a certain distance, very, very close distance of the oculine banks, the last two remaining coral reefs that we have. the ability to trawl within a certain distance, very, very close distance of the oculine banks, the last two remaining coral reefs that we have. We've have one final line of defense, the National Marine Fisheries Service has to prove it. We're trying to mobilize public opinion so that they can see that, you know, this, this amendment itself will actually harm commercial shrimping and recreational fishing in the future.
Well, thank you for all that information. Appreciate the work that you do, and if there are volunteers out there who would like to, you don't just do artificial reefs offshore, you actually create living reefs along our shorelines on the Indian River Gooine. So this is your chance to get some volunteers and some sponsors.
Thank you very much.
And where would they call?
They would call me Jim Oppenborn at area code seven seven two four six two one seven one three, or they can simply email me at oppenborn, that's O-P-P-E-N-B-O-R-N-J, at S-T for Saint, L-U-C-I-E for Lucy, C-O for county dot O R G. And we do artificial reefs offshore, we do oyster reefs inshore, we do seagrasses. We're working on a snorkel trail, all sorts of things. If anybody is interested in the water at all, please contact me at your convenience.
And we're on the website as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you to Shron family, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Wonderful tribute. Okay. Thank you again so much for your contribution and your living reef. Next item will be a consent agenda. Anyone wishing to, any board members wishing to pull an item for extra vote or conversation?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull, excuse me, eight E one, and this is mostly for a follow-up to a discussion I had with staff yesterday.
Okay. Anyone else on the board? Commissioner Townsend, anything to pull for separate voter discussion?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, if there's nothing else, Commissioner Hutchinson, do you want to bring that one forward, then we'll bring them up?
This is in regards to the self-performance on the facilities, construction, renovation. And personally, I think this is a great idea, and I'm glad we're opening this door and going down that road. But one of my concerns, and I've shared this with staff, so on the record, I just want it on the record for the public's sake on it. I had concerns in regards to being a part, it was not yet adopted into our purchasing manuals and so forth. So if staff can follow up on the timeframe, because that's what we were down to, and they were still looking into that.
Danny?
Good morning, Chair.
Mr. Rutherford, sorry. Maybe just speak a little louder, or, yeah, you're on.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners, Daniel Rutherford, Facilities Director for the Record, with Scotty Valou, Facilities Manager. We're really excited about this project. This is the first of many dominoes. We've been working on, on reducing our footprint for the county for, I don't know, it feels like an eternity now, but, but we're, we're there. We're starting, we're actually going to see some, some projects put together, which is actually going to be able to take some of the much, much older inventory out and rotate it out and raise it and, and stop paying for some, some of those older buildings and maintenance. So we're really excited, this, you know, it's finally getting there. This project, the reason this project's coming before you is because we're just not quite there yet with the revision to the purchasing policy. We hope to be there by now, so that we didn't have to bring you an individual project through, but we're not there. We intend to probably have this ready by the end of the year, January one, December, end of December, beginning of January, you should be seeing the revision to the purchasing policy come through for your approval. What we're asking to do in this, in this purchasing policy revision, right now, the, the purchasing policy is silent on our, on, on the county's ability to self-perform work in its own house. State statute two fifty-five twenty allows for anything under three hundred thousand dollars to be performed with your own staff or, or to sub portions of it out and hire contractors to do some work. But to, basically, to perform as a, what a G C would do. But we, we have the ability to do some of our own work and hire the subs out for anything under three hundred thousand dollars. There is a BCI, which is the Building Cost Index, which escalates that since two thousand eight annually, basically for inflation. And so this year's number is somewhere around four hundred thousand dollars, what we would be able to perform in-house. So we don't have that, that, that purchasing policy revision finished yet. Hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have that, and then we'll bring that before you, which will simply acknowledge the state statute and then detail out how we intend to follow it, and hopefully we can get that approved the end of the year. This, this I'm hoping to get approved to, to start October one. Again, this is the first of many dominoes for projects that I have to get done next year that I'm, that I'm budgeted for, if the budget gets approved the way it sits now. And, and if I don't get started October first on some of these things, I simply just can't finish my projects by the end of the year, and the money goes away. So that's why we're here for this project specifically, which, I wish it were the case, but.
Well, as always, our staff always looks at things and tries to make the best possible outcome for the taxpayers, and, and being able to save significant dollars on this is, is really important, so. Commissioner Hutchinson, did you have any?
Mr. Chair, I, I agree with you, and I don't, like I said earlier, my concern is not so much with the project and the opportunity to do this, but I think the importance is pointing out that the timing isn't why we would normally wait until that policy make change was made, but having it on the record that the timing, and the importance of moving forward on October one with knowing that that policy's right behind us type of thing, I'm comfortable with it, but I always wanted to make sure it was out there publicly. We weren't putting the horse before the cart.
Sure, sure. Any other comments from the commissioners? Mr. Townsend, any comments? Good?
Nope, I'm good. I'll make a motion to approve if you want me to.
All right, we can put that with the entire consent agenda, if that's okay with you?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, and a second from Bart's. Any comments or questions on the items? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zadowski?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rutherford, Mr. Blue. All right. Next item will be our regular agenda. There are no public hearings today. We'll move on to the regular agenda, and it looks like we have a full slate for the Attorney's Office today. Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item, the first item, is a proposed resolution that would establish an initial application fee for unsolicited proposals for public-private partnerships. In fact, those partnerships seem to be becoming more prevalent. We've actually received one related to Pepper Park that we're in the process of analyzing. We did adopt a resolution in September of this year, earlier this year, last meeting, where we adopted procedures for the purchasing manual. But in, at that time, we talked about establishing an initial application fee, and there was some board discussion about that. We're proposing an application fee of three thousand dollars effective October first, and it's just an application fee. The actual cost of the analysis will be paid for by the applicant, so if it's more than that, they will pay. If it's less than that, well, the, the application fee will still cover the county's cost. There's no magic to the number, it's, we've talked about it at an administration level. We wanted a, a fee that was significant enough to cover our initial costs, but we didn't want a, a large fee that would dissuade people from potential applicants from coming into the county. So really, again, there's no magic to it. We're, we're suggesting a three thousand dollar fee effective October first, and that would be by, by resolution.
All right, thank you. Any questions of Mr. McIntyre? Mr. Townsend, any questions of staff?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Motion by Hutchinson, second by Mitchell. I just want to simply state that, you know, the public private partnerships are really important, and we have had a lot of people come through over the years, what I call kicking the tires, and it's really important that we at least set a, set a benchmark that has to be met because we can't just have our staff running around, you know, after every idea that might be out there and, and cause more difficulty with our staff time, so I appreciate the effort here. That being said, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zadowski?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. The next item is very interesting and I'm very happy that it's coming forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you indicated, this item is a, is a fairly unique item. Adams Ranch Inc. has applied to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the Florida Forever Program to create a new less-than-fee project to protect approximately fifteen thousand one hundred and sixty acres of ranch and natural lands with a permanent conservation easement or easements. This particular program focuses on maintaining the integrity and function of working agricultural landscapes and ensuring opportunities for viable agricultural activities on those lands. The board has in front of it a proposed resolution that, if adopted, would support and endorse the application. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Any comments or questions from, for staff?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Bart, second by Townsend. Before we call this, I, I see the Adams in the audience. This is a really important thing for your, your family and for St. Lucie County. Would you like to share any information, or are you okay with moving forward this? I think that the value of the Adams Ranch and, and what you've done for not only St. Lucie County, but the entire state of Florida deserves time to be recognized, and this is a, it's a very wonderful effort that you're trying to accomplish and for the record.
Thank you, St. Lucie County Board of, St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners for recognizing the importance of the Adams Ranch Florida Forever Application. The Adams family has been actively and successfully pursuing placing conservation easements on our ranches for thirteen years now. To date, we have put approximately eight thousand acres under conservation easement in Madison and Osceola County. What does this mean? This means that the land can continue to stay in agriculture in perpetuity. This will allow for food security, which is a topic that was brought to everyone's attention during this pandemic. You will never see a housing development on the property. The land will be cared for as it has for the past eighty-five years, growing food, providing the native wildlife with a home, and protecting our precious water resources. And because this would be a less-than-fee purchase, the property will stay on the tax rolls and be managed privately. Thank you again for your support, and if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Can you just share your name for the record?
And I'm Leanne Adams Simmons from Adams Ranch.
And Mr. Adams, do you have anything to share?
And I'm Mike Adams, and I just want to thank you for your consideration, and we certainly are excited that, you know, we, we keep, keep trying to get this done one way or another, so we look forward to, to getting this done at some time. So thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for your family's contribution to our conservations. All right, so we had a motion and a second, any additional conversation? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zadowski?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, and, and good luck. We appreciate you. All right, moving along to item number three, Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Assistant County Attorney Caroline Valentine will be handling this item.
Good morning. Before y'all, this morning, for approval is the collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Local Union Number seven six nine. The agreement provides for a three-year term with negotiations to reopen each year on wages and an article of each party's choosing. The negotiated revisions were provided in a red line, but among those changes are a wage increase of four percent or a dollar ten per hour, whichever is greater, and a increase to the boot allowance to a hundred and seventy-five dollars. The bargaining unit voted to ratify this agreement on September first, twenty twenty-one, and staff recommends that the board approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Local Union Number seven six nine and authorize the chair to sign. And John and I are available for any questions or discussion y'all may have.
Thank you. Any, John?
I just want to point out, because I know there's a question during the executive sessions, just the impact of the four percent or a dollar ten per hour. For the lowest hourly, full-time employee, their hourly rate will go from thirteen twenty-nine to fourteen thirty-nine, which represents an eight-point-two-eight percent increase. And when you look at that with the changes to the health insurance plan, they'll receive on average a dollar, a hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-one cents a month, or eighteen hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents annually. The average hourly rate was, goes from eighteen seventy-six to nineteen eighty-six, a five-point-eight-six percent increase. And I know many communities are concerned about the twenty twenty-five moving to fifteen dollars per hour. With this increase, the county will have only fourteen, or seventeen employees that are making less than fifteen dollars an hour, and the lowest will be fourteen thirty-nine for full-time. And the last thing I'll add is we did add two additional stewards to utilities, one for solid waste, one for water and sewer. And I would just also like to thank the board and county administration for the leadership. Carolyn Heather Young, who helped started this as part of our collective bargaining team, along with Chanel Valentine and Prakash, and thank the Teamsters Steve Meyer and the Chief Stewart Sandy Jackson for their, their good faith negotiations and willing to working on these issues. Thank you, Board.
Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, I have one. This isn't really the union, but it's about staff in general. I know last year there was a leveling out process that happened, and there were people that had been with the county three, four, five years, and then there were people that had just started. And when they leveled everything, some of the people that had just come in and had been there six months to a year actually ended up making more than somebody that had been there three or four years. And I know that H R was supposed to go back and look at that, so that there would be a fairness that somebody new coming in would not make more than somebody that had been in, in existence. Do you know where we are with that in H R?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Chanel Tomlin has been looking at that, and I believe we have a meeting scheduled with you next week to discuss that.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And was that also not part of the salary study that we also did as part of that?
All this predicates, and it was based on the compensation study and the implication thereof.
Right. Okay, any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mitchell, second by Bart's. Any other comments or questions on the item? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zadowski?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. As we move along, Mr. McIntyre, I think that item four and nine will kind of go together. Are you okay with bringing those two together?
Yes, sir, I agree with that. They both relate to the same topic. If it's okay with you, I'll start with item four, though. I think that's the, the proper way to handle it. And actually, this is an item that we talked about, as you recall, at our informal meeting where we went through this agenda item. So I'll go through it, though, in some detail, just because it's important to lay the predicate for what we're doing. We actually adopted our road impact fee in nineteen eighty-five. We were one of the first counties to do that, so it's been in place for thirty-six years. We adopted our parks impact fee in nineteen ninety-five, so that's been in place for twenty-six years. We've collected our fees within the cities, including the city of Port St. Lucie, since those dates, typically through collection inter-local agreements, although there was a period of time when the city of Port St. Lucie terminated their collection agreement, adopted their own impact fees for roads, parks, and public buildings, and adopted an ordinance at that time attempting to prevent the county from collecting its road, parks, and public building impact fees. That was in about a two thousand five, two thousand and six. At that time, we instituted a bond validation complaint in which the city participated. The county prevailed in that, so the court ruled that the county could legally collect its roads, parks, and public building impact fees within the city. Impact fees are assessed against new development to make sure that the new development pays for their impacts. If you don't do that, two bad things can happen. One is the impacts don't get paid for and your level of service gets degraded, or the existing residents will have to pay that. Either way is unacceptable. State law requires that the county periodically update its impact fees. We last updated our park impact fee in two thousand and sixteen, so it's due. And our road impact fee, we updated it in two thousand and nineteen. So it is not due, but we felt that it was important to update it in view of changes in the state law. In March of this year, well before conflict resolution was initiated by the city, we had retained the firms of neighbor. had retained the firms of Naver, Nickerson, PFM, and Tindale Oliver to assist the county in updating its impact fees. Those impact fee updates also include libraries, public buildings, law enforcement, and parks and road impact fees. Tindale Oliver is preparing the road impact fee update. PFM is preparing the remainder. Those impact fee updates are scheduled to be completed on or before December 1st, 2021. As the Board is aware, the city of Port St. Lucie terminated the collection interlocal agreements in January of this year for roads and parks. That decision to terminate will also have the effect of terminating the current credit that we give the Port St. Lucie development community, which is up to 50%. We did that back in 2011 in an effort to improve economic development in the city. What we wanted to try to achieve was a level playing field for developers in the unincorporated area and developers in the city. By applying that credit, the developers were on, we felt, a level playing field, and it was the right thing to do. The city has the ability, or at least currently has the ability, through October 1st, to credit up to 50% of their impact fee. They have only credited about 23%, I think, somewhere in that range, but they had the ability to go further. So that will terminate that credit provision, which is not good for the development community. In correspondence and conversation with the city staff on their mobility fee, we've made clear the following points. County staff has no objection to the city replacing city impact fees, road impact fees, with a city mobility fee. What we do object to is them including county roads in their mobility fee. We don't believe that's legally permissible, nor is it authorized by law. State law provides that the county commissioners are invested with a general superintendent's in control of county roads, not the city. With that in mind, county staff does not believe that the city has jurisdiction to collect funds for county roads without our consent, which we have not given. State law, which was confirmed by the judgment I referenced, provides that the city cannot prevent the county from collecting its roads or parks impact fee. In July of this year, the city initiated conflict resolution pursuant to Chapter 164 Florida statutes. There's a three-step process. Conflict assessment meetings, which we've had four of, but those have terminated at this point. The next step will be a joint public meeting, which we're attempting to schedule with the city, and then the third step is formal mediation. In the process of this, there's been certain issues identified in terms of the city suggesting that we need to look at and perhaps enact more road impact fee zones and park impact fee zones. And at a staff level, we agree with that. We think we need to look at that, and we've asked our consultant to do that. We also need to examine our fees, which we are doing and are in the process of doing, to make sure the amount of fees are appropriate and meet the dual rational nexus test. We want our fees to be fair. We don't want to charge too much to the development community. That's why we did the credit. We're trying to encourage development. So to charge too much fees is not in our best interest or the development community. Since our impact fees will be completed after October 1st in honor before, hopefully, December 1st of 2021, the county's impact fee consultants are recommending that the Board consider and adopt the attached resolution, which is attached to it. And we've discussed this, but it would, if adopted, escrow all of the county's road and park impact fees that are collected within the boundaries of the city of Port St. Lucie after October 1st until the impact fee updates are completed and a new impact fee ordinance is adopted. It would also, in the event that those fees come back in lower, propose to refund those fees collected during this interim period of time, to the extent that there's a difference between the fees. We have also, in this resolution, asked our consultants specifically to look at the issue of increasing zones. That will come back in front of the Board at a later date once the study is complete. As I indicated at the time, the city held a public hearing on September 13th to consider adopting a mobility fee that included county roads, notwithstanding the fact that the parties are still involved in conflict resolution that was actually initiated by the city. We sent a letter through the county administrator to the city manager requesting that the city council defer action. They refused to do that. They adopted the fee. Actually, we had a county representative attend the hearing that intended to speak, but the city council voted to approve the ordinance without allowing public comment. Let me state that again. The way I understand this was, and Ms. Olson is in the audience, she can confirm this, is that the city held, voted on the ordinance without actually opening the public hearing, so there was no public comment allowed. Ms. Olson and others left after that. The city attempted to, later on in the meeting, open the public hearing and obtain public comment at that point and re-vote on the issue. And actually, Ms. Olson received an email from an assistant city manager encouraging her to submit her comments after the vote was taken and after the meeting was closed. We'll talk about that in the next item. Mr. Chairman, staff recommends that the Board adopt the Resolution 21-361 and authorize the Chair to sign the resolution. This resolution, again, would escrow the county's road and park impact fee. It would provide for the consultants to look at the issue of more zones, and it would provide for refunds in the event that those fees end up being coming lower than what is currently in place. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions of staff? Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. McIntyre, has the city tried to rectify the situation by having a public hearing and not letting the public address, like to do it again, to public notify, every one of that nature, so they can do it correctly? Have you heard?
They did that same meeting, as I indicated. Later on in the meeting, as I understand it, they did open the public hearing again, but I think your question was how they advertised a new public hearing.
That's correct.
To my knowledge, that has not happened.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, this is on this item only, and I think Mr. McIntyre referred to be two different discussions here. But this is when we discussed it around formal in-depth and so forth, and I think, once again, the timing is what came into play, and this is a good faith effort to continue those discussions or the process, if you will, since we've now reached an impasse. So I have no problem with doing what we said we would do. We would put those funds aside. And Mr. McIntyre, just for the record, those are the funds collected after October 1st, correct?
That is correct. It will not include monies that's been encumbered or spent or appropriated, but it's new monies that were collected after October 1st.
Which is the date of the end of the interlocal agreement.
That is correct.
That's where this comes about on.
That is correct.
So I have no problem with moving approval on this item, and it basically confirms that the county is still acting in good faith, that we are putting the money aside until possibly there will be a resolution.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? I just simply want to say that this is such an important issue for our economic engine, that which is our development community. We heard this morning about all the wonderful things that are happening with our Economic Development Council, the number of businesses that are coming in, having surety and understanding from the development community as to what they can expect, I think is important, which is what we are trying to accomplish. So that being said, if there's no further comment or question, is there a motion?
No move.
We have a motion by Bart.
I already made the motion.
That's correct.
Second by Bart.
Okay. Motion by Hutchinson, second by Bart. Any other comments or questions on the item? Airing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zadowski?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Mr. McIntyre, number nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item relates to the city's mobility fee ordinance. As I indicated, the city adopted the mobility fee ordinance on September 13th that included a fee for county roads, notwithstanding our request that they defer action until we complete the conflict resolution process. And that created a lot of problems for us. It makes it, I think, more difficult to settle. It also puts the county in an awkward legal position, trying to figure out what to do. We're in the middle of conflict resolution, and so you really want that to work out. And I think I speak for the county administrator here, and I'm going to ask him to speak when I'm completed, but it's better for everyone if we can work this out. It's better for the county, it's better for the city, it's better for the development community. It certainly, it makes a lot of sense on a lot of different levels. Failure to do so will have negative impacts on a lot of different levels. Notwithstanding our request to continue the item, they did adopt it, and it did include county roads. I don't believe they have legal authority to do that, and we've made that clear to them during the process, but yet they continued to do that. I also think that the process that they handled it when they adopted it and voted on it without opening the public hearing is inappropriate and illegal. It does not comply with the procedural requirements of the law. Again, we're in an awkward position. We're in the middle of conflict resolution. I think waiting until this process is done, it looks like it could be October, November, late October, early November, is not in our best interest. At that point, somebody could say, well, why did you wait? Why didn't you say anything? We could, I guess, write another letter, but we've written letters, and they have ignored them, basically. Acknowledged them, but continued to do what they think is appropriate, I guess. So from my perspective, Mr. Chair, I'm recommending that the Board authorize the county attorney to file suit to challenge that mobility fee ordinance, because I don't think it was adopted in accordance with the procedural requirements of law, and I also think it included county roads without our consent, and I don't believe they have a legal authority to do that. Mr. Chairman, I'd like the county administrator to perhaps give his perspective on the status of the negotiations and where we are.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as the county attorney has indicated, we have met, I think, four times, the last time on September 15th. Our discussions have revolved around, and kind of the central issue is whether or not the county roads can be in the city's plans without our consent, which we have not given. And it is a fundamental issue that we are not able to overcome at step one in this process. We, as Commissioner Hutchinson indicated, we are at an impasse. We are working to find some dates and a neutral location. But I think the county throughout this process has listened to the city's questions. As Mr. McIntyre indicated, we have asked our consultant to look at the zones to update the fees. And all we asked was really just for some time, you know, trying to get to 60 or 90 days to see if we could get there. And we just weren't unable to get there. We just couldn't get there. It's incredibly disappointing in the way that they move forward with the ordinance in the middle of our negotiations. And I don't see another way around having the county roads in their plans without some type of legal decision, court decision. And it's regrettable, as Mr. McIntyre indicated, we work well together on a number of different fronts. There are a number of different community issues that we need to continue to work together on. This one is just one that we are going to have to, I think, find another path. And so I support the direction that we're taking.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the Board? Commissioner Mitchell?
Mr. Tipton, are we, just so, I've been following what we've both been doing back and forth, the city and the county. Are we within a few hundred dollars of where they, what we're willing to give and what they want?
Yes, sir. If we were to look at our existing agreement, and if you just wanted to work to extend that, as Mr. McIntyre indicated, that the city has, by choice, not maximized the amount of revenues that they can get under the current agreement, they could, today, increase that by 238%, giving them 56% of the income coming in, and reducing the county's from 77% currently down to 46%. And so when you do that, and if you take the county roads out, we think the dollars actually work to get to that, where it... So all that to say, I don't think this is just about money.
Okay, thank you. That was the only question I had.
Well, I think it's also important to understand, we talked about Port St. Lucie, including our roads. Well, you know, we travel across the entire county. Every person has been across the county at some point. And what St. Lucie County does is we focus on the regional approach, whether it's Midway Road, God, it takes forever for that one to get done, but at the end of the day, that's hundreds of millions of dollars. You have Kings Highway, you have Indriaro Road, all of which are going to be very important to the city of Port St. Lucie, once the airport is up and running and we have an established commercial airport. There's so many options for hurricane evacuation. So when we build a road, it's incredibly expensive. And what this county has done with the boards, this board and previous boards, has been very frugal. We pay as we go. We try to stockpile as much money as possible so that when the chance comes for additional grant money, support from the state or federal government, then we can have those funds available to actually do a bigger project and faster. Go ahead, you're going to say.
I was just going to share, Mr. Chairman, to your point, I think the county does have a responsibility for a countywide road network, and that's a critical point for us. But if you look out over the next few years, the county will be spending 96% of our impact fees within two miles of the city's borders. I think we recognize the impacts of the growth that the city of Port St. Lucie has on the county's road networks, and that's why we're committed to making those investments over these next few years, which is a considerable investment. I mean, 96% is virtually all of the impact fees available. And so I just wanted to make that point. It is a county road network perspective, and I think the county has been committed to making sure that that road network continues to work.
Yeah, and then the other part of this is not encumbering the taxpayers of St. Lucie County with a lot of debt. You know, we manage our bond approvals very frugally, and to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a box where we have high debt and unable to pay it and get high interest rates and so on and so forth. So we just recently moved forward with an additional bond let to finish some portions of Midway Road. And again, you know, everybody wants us to be fiscally responsible, and that's what this board is doing. And so that has to be said, and I just want to put that on the record for today's conversation. And Commissioner Hutchinson, I saw you pull your mic up. Did you want to share?
I'll share just a little bit, or I'll try to. You know, people look at things, the perception is that the county and the city are fighting again, and who's going to win, who's going to lose. And I look at this, there is no winner or loser.
You're absolutely right.
What happens is the loss of a partnership that has been extremely successful in the past. And at this point, however, the ones that are affected the most, no matter which way it goes, is the residents, and it's not even just the developers, it's the businesses that are looking to come here, and it is also that single landowner who's trying to build his own for the first time, not through a development, but on a piece he's probably saved and paid off and everything else on it. And it puts them in a bind. And so, Mr. McIntyre, I'm going to ask you, if we do follow suit, file suit here, like is being asked, do we also have the ability to ask for an injunction for things to remain status quo?
Well, that's...
And I say that because my concern is if the city's putting into escrow, which they did with their mobility fee to a point, and the county just now passed one putting into escrow, what happens is, and I'm going to focus on that single-family home builder, for lack of a better word for saying it, they are now paying all of this, and that can actually kick them out of the market of getting a loan, just those little differences, possibly.
Right.
And with no end in sight. So I'm trying to get, where do, how do we correct that? And that's what I'm asking about a possible injunction.
It is possible in a vacuum to move for an injunction. The thing that's complicating this is we're in the middle of conflict resolution. And really, I say in my memo that one of the things we've done in the past when we've had this circumstance where we've had to act, is we typically move to abate. We want to file because there's some time constraints, we don't want to wait, but we typically move to abate. I'll talk with our outside counsel on this and see what our options are. I'll, I'll talk with our outside counsel on this and see what our options are. But again, we want to make sure that we're proceeding in good faith. We're trying to, but, but the adoption of the ordinance really changed things for us. It, it really was a, it's an unfortunate occurrence. It would have been better, I think, all parties would have been better served for them to defer action until we had perhaps worked it out, but they chose not to do that, and it puts us in an awkward position. But we will look at that issue. It, it is, even though both sides are going to escrow their, their fees, they're escrowing their fifteen percent, and we're escrowing our total amount of fees, that's still a double charge.
Right.
And in my mind, it's the city who's double charging. Their, their fee, they don't have a fee right now. We've had ours for thirty-six years. So they're the ones that are imposing the additional fee. Even though it's escrowed, it's still a double charge in my mind.
Well, and that's, and that's where I'm coming from. I didn't know, if you're going to look into it, at least if we can ask for some type of an injunction put on to keep it status quo for both sides, to be fair enough. That way, it's the fairest thing to the consumer and the residents and businesses out there.
We'll certainly look at the issue again. It's complicated by the fact that we're in the middle of conflict resolution.
No, I understand that.
Commissioner Bartsch.
I think that frankly, I've been really, really hoping and have stated out loud several times that I wanted to see us come to a resolution. Disappoints me that we're at this junction. I was hoping that we would get somewhere with conflict resolution. But again, I'm disappointed. I don't know, Mr. McIntyre, we are talking about escrowing the fees. You have mentioned several times that the city is going to escrow their fees.
Not the total fee, is I understand it. Mr. Tipton can correct me.
Well, this is my, this is my question, though. From my understanding and from what I watched, while I watched the meeting, was that they are only escrowing until November one. So what does that effect have with them only escrowing till November one and us voting to escrow without a date certain?
Right. I, frankly, I think we need to do what's, what's right for us. And, and I think what's right for us is to escrow until we've completed our study and adopted our ordinance. What the city does with their mobility fee is really, it's outside of our control right now. And I think they're only escrowing the, they've allocated an arbitrary fifteen percent for county roads, I think, is what I understand it. And I, I did hear on November first that they gave their staff till November first to work this out. We have no control over that, over what they do, but we, only thing we have control over is what we do. And I think it's the right thing to do to escrow the funds and provide for the refund. And so that's what we need to do regardless of what they do.
Okay. I just wanted to make that public and to make sure that we knew or that the public knew that this was on their side only till November one, and that we are moving forward, quite frankly, to do the right thing.
And, and again, I just want to bring up the fact that, you know, there's a misperception that, that, you know, that the county has this ability to invest in roads that only affect unincorporated county. The county has involved in a, we've talked about the tools earlier, about the tax abatement, job grants incentive and so on and so forth. And the reason why Oculus and Tamco and Amazon, FedEx, Chaney Brothers, the, all the other intermodal distribution centers, even, even Cleveland Clinic, why they came here is because the population center is, is currently in Port St. Lucie. But if you're going to have a million square feet of Amazon and you have a thousand trucks every day leaving that facility, they're going to travel on every road in every part of the county, as well as FedEx, Chaney Brothers, all the restaurants that, that will be leaving, will be supported by the Chaney Brothers Distribution all over the county. So again, we look at the, at the regional approach to this, and, and I think it's so important that we do this right. And again, my bigger concern is from the outside world, looking at disruption in the sanctity of the communication that we once had, and I think we can get that back. I don't think we've lost that. But I think it's important that, that both sides work in good faith for the economic engine, that which is this county, across the board. So if there are any other questions, Commissioner Townsend, I just didn't want to forget you. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I don't really have anything, Dan. I mean, I, I agree with you that with everything we've done, especially with Amazon and them, the residents that they're servicing live in, in the north and south side of the county. So I agree, it's a regional process. Thank you.
Okay. There's any other comments or questions? If not, I'll accept a motion to staff recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the resolution to go ahead and file.
Did you want to have any language in there about the injunction or?
Well, he's going to first run it through the outside counsel, is my understanding, so I don't want to add it to the motion until we know.
Let's not tie our hands. We, we're going to look at the abatement process, we're going to look at the injunction, and we'll, we'll analyze all of that again. It's complicated by the fact that we're in conflict resolution, and we need, we want to, we're planning on continuing with conflict resolution. It's, it's our every intention to proceed and try to work it out. That's not going to stop.
And, Mr. Chair, just for the record, following up on what Dan just said, you know, we've already put a letter out with dates. We are not sitting back waiting. So now it's already in the hands of Port St. Lucie. And if I'm not mistaken, it's three different dates-
That's correct.
-in times that we put out to follow up with it. So this just all took place last week, the final board meeting, which was four meetings, not just three, it was four. Those staffs went over and above. And it's unfortunate, and, and this is really on the legalities of holding a public hearing and not even allowing and/or acknowledging any public comment. That's what this suit is about. And the fact that, that you're, you've, they, meaning Port St. Lucie, have passed a resolution to put a tax, for lack of a better word, on county roads when they have no authority. That's what the suit is in regards to. It's not in regards to the impasse that we are at.
Okay.
So that's my mission.
We have a motion by Hutchinson, staff recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mitchell. Any other comments or questions on the item? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bartsch?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. It's a busy day for you, Mr. McIntyre, under number five.
Thank you. Criminal Justice Director Joseph Cowan will be handling actually the next item, the next three items, items five, six, seven, and eight.
Good morning. We're the record, Joseph Cowan, Criminal Justice Director. Item five is a, St. Lucie County has been, has provided pretrial services to Martin County pursuant to an interlocal agreement since two thousand and eighteen. Martin County would like St. Lucie County to continue to provide pretrial services. Martin County is taking the Third Amendment to this interlocal agreement to their board, where it is expected to be approved. This Third Amendment to the interlocal agreement will increase St. Lucie County's fee for service from two hundred and seventy thousand to two hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars annually. This fa, fee is paid quarterly amounts of seventy-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. This Third Amendment to the interlocal agreement will also extend the term for an additional one year, beginning October first, two thousand and twenty-one, and expiring September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Previously, the board approved the Second Amendment in September of two thousand and twenty. And the financial impact, there's no negative impact on St. Lucie County. The funds collected from Martin County will offset our costs to operate the program. And FY twenty-two budget reflects the twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollar increase from Martin County's contract. Staff recommends approval to the contract as drafted by the county attorney's office.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by-
Second.
-Mitchell, second by Bartsch. I just want to point out that this is just another example of St. Lucie County's intergovernmental cooperation that is helpful to our community. That's it. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartsch?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am. Next item.
Agenda item number six. This is a funding request for one full-time mental health court manager and one part-time mental health court manager for mental health court in an amount of sixty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Mental health court hears cases that are both misdemeanor and felonies. The goal of mental health court is to provide services along with resources for mentally ill defendants involving the criminal justice system. A little background, this program started two thousand and six by Judge Con, by Judge Cox, who held the first mental health court session at St. Lucie County Courthouse. And a mental health court manager position was put in place over ten years ago in order for the court to provide services to the mentally ill defendants. Mental health court manager also provides coordinating treatment, which includes working with and developing individually tailored treatment plans for an array of services, including medication management, support, supported living, employment, education, rehab, and housing services, excuse me, housing opportunities, as well as peer support. This position also helps defendants apply for federal benefits. New Horizons of the Treasure Coast partners closely with the courts and criminal justice system to provide a broad range of mental health and substance abuse services. As a nonprofit corporation providing residential and outpatient mental health and substance abuse rehabilitation for over fifty years. It has been the primary local provider of substance abuse and mental health services. New Horizons is the only program in the county that can provide the services needed to achieve the overall goal of reducing criminalization of the mentally ill within the correctional and juris, judicial system and reduce the rate of recidivism of the mentally ill. The attached contract provides new, for New Horizons to serve as the mental health court manager. In previous action, the board has funded this position since two thousand and seven. The board also approved the First Amendment February of this year, two thousand and twenty, with a provided three percent increase in mental health court manager's salary. Financial impact. Sufficient funds are appropriated in the contract labor amount of the Criminal Justice Legal Counsel Division for the sixty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. This staff recommends approval of the contract as drafted by the county attorney's office.
Any comments or questions from the board?
I have a quick question, Mr. Chair.
Certainly.
Pretty much yes or no. I know that Judge Cox started mental health court. I believe she also either started the drug court, and if not, she was extremely involved. Will this also, this position also oversee drug court? Do you know?
This particular position is for mental health.
Just mental health. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the board? Hearing none. We have, looking for a motion for staff recommendation for approval.
Mr.-
Approval.
Second. We have a motion to approve by Townsend, second by Mitchell. Any comments or questions on the item? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bartsch?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. You're busy today.
Yeah, I get good backup, so it's okay. Item number seven is the Seventh Amendment to interlocal agreement with Okeechobee County for pretrial services. St. Lucie County has provided pretrial services to Okeechobee County pursuant to an interlocal agreement since October two thousand and fifteen. Okeechobee County is taking the Seventh Amendment to, of, interlocal agreement to their board on September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, where it is expected to be approved. This amendment will extend the term for an additional year, beginning October first, two thousand and twenty-one, through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Fee for pretrial services in Okeechobee County is one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This fee is paid in quarterly amounts of thirty thousand dollars. Previous action, the board approved the Sixth Amendment to the interlocal agreement September twenty-fourth of two thousand and twenty. Financial impact, the amendment, the amended interlocal agreement will have no negative impact on St. Lucie County. The funds collected from Okeechobee will offset our costs to operate the program. One hundred and twenty thousand dollars is budgeted. Staff recommends approval.
Any comments or questions from the board?
I'm in.
I'm in.
So I just want to say, I have followed pretrial for many years, and I think that you've done a great job, the entire group. I know there's been many challenges. It is a very big county, and you have had to spread thin sometimes to monitor. But I want to say thank you and good job regarding adding on Martin and Okeechobee County. It took a while, but it's been a very po, or both have been very positive partnerships. And I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any comments or questions from the board? Hearing none. I'll accept a motion to approve staff recommendation. Motion by Bartsch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Townsend. Any other comments or questions on the item? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartsch?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And on to the last one.
Okay. Item number eight is for, approve the jail diversion contract with New Horizons of the Treasure Coast for FY twenty-one, twenty-two. Since two thousand and five, two thousand and six, the board has funded New Horizons of the Treasure Coast to provide services to individuals involved in the criminal justice system that suffer from mental and/or substance abuse disorders. This five hundred and thirty-three thousand fifty dollar in funding from the fine and forfeiture fund provides housing, medication, case management, psychosocial rehabilitation, and substance abuse services in community-based settings. The contract for services is five hundred and thirty-three thousand fifty dollars. Early intervention opportunities for mental health and substance abuse offenders provide these defendants and offenders with access to alternative, more appropriate community mental health treatment at a cost significantly less than the cost of incarceration. New Horizons of the Treasure Coast partners closely with the courts and the criminal justice system to provide a broad range of mental health and substance abuse services. As a nonprofit corporation providing residential and outpatient mental health and substance abuse rehabilitation for the last fifty years. It has been the primary local provider of substance abuse and mental health services. Since mental health courts started two thousand and six, there have been eighteen hundred and nineteen clients, and we currently have one hundred and eighty-four active cases. The national average cost of mental health cases in custody is a hundred and twenty-five dollars per day. Mental health cases can stay up to seven times longer than the average inmate, and the average is thirty-five days. It should also be noted that the recidivism rate is only nine percent for individuals completing the mental health court program. The national average for mental health clients is seventy-eight percent recidivism. Previous action since two thousand and six to two thousand and seven, the board has funded the jail diversion services provided by New Horizons of the Treasure Coast. The board also approved a First Amendment in February second to two thousand and twenty-one, which added sixty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to the contract. Five hundred and thirty-three thousand and fifty dollars has been approved in the criminal justice budget for FY twenty-one, twenty-two, for mental health services through New Horizons. Staff recommends approval of the contract as drafted by the county attorney's staff.
Any questions or staff? Any questions or staff?
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve by Townsend.
Second.
Second by Bartz.
No. Hutchinson.
Oh, I'm sorry, Hutchinson. Any comments or questions on the item? Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Zadowski?
Yes ma'am. Thank you. That concludes our county attorney's portion of the agenda. Moving on to planning and development services. Next item will be administrative approval update from the planning development services director. This is just informational. No votes will be taken on this. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Sorry, I was back there multitasking, not paying close enough attention.
Something unusual for you?
Oh, no. And I'm totally, totally caught. Hold on just a second, if you would. All right. This morning, we're just going over our administrative approvals for August. We have a few executive order extensions from the governor that we execute. Beth Smith Kia is doing some expansion, but hasn't done it yet, and they extended their development order, and that's on South US One. We also have International Airport Business Park on the south side of Saint Lucy Boulevard near the airport, and that one has also been extended. Not yet built. There was a property in Queens Island that got a variance for a pool to encroach into the setback, and a lot split on South Indian River Drive. We also had basically a reconfiguration of lots out west of town on Pineapple Lane. And that is it. Any questions for me today?
Okay. Any questions of Leslie? Hearing none? Okay. And we're moving right along. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item will be Planning and Development Services, item B two. This will be the Gamboa Residence Comprehensive Plan Policy request for wetland waiver. This is quasi-judicial. Anyone having any disclosures to make?
Mr. Chair, I just spoke with Dana Small of DLS. He's a representative of the applicant along with staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartz?
The same.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Dana Small, the consultant and staff.
Commissioner Townsend?
The same, Dana Small, in ARD.
I had the same disclosures, Dana Small, DLS, and staff. All right, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. For the record, Amy Cooper, pardon me, and our environmental regulations manager, presenting a category-one wetland waiver request on behalf of Crestano Gamboa for lots six and seven of Marybie Drive in Fort Pierce. The Saint Lucy County Comprehensive Plan classifies wetlands into three categories based on their size, location, and hydrologic connectivity to adjacent water bodies. Category-one wetlands are those which are hydrologically connected to a natural surface water body, are twenty acres or larger, or contain strategic habitat conservation areas. Impacts to a category-one wetland or its buffer may only be approved by the Board of County Commissioners in accordance with Comprehensive Plan Policy six point one point fourteen point three. The subject parcel is located on the west side of Marybie Drive and directly abouts an oxbow of the North Fork of the Saint Lucy River to the west. The subject parcel was recorded March eleventh, nineteen twenty-six, as lots six and seven are shown and read on the plan exhibit. The subject parcel is zoned RS-three residential single-family at three units per acre with the future land use of residential urban. The surrounding properties to the north, east, and south are also zoned RS-three with the residential urban future land use. To the west is a conservation public property known as Idabel Island. In two thousand and four, the subject parcel contained two jurisdictional wetlands, as shown on the slide. The one thousand nine hundred and sixty square foot wetland on the northern portion of the parcel was filled sometime between the issuance of the two thousand and four Florida Department of Environmental Protection permit in two thousand and nine. However, no approvals from the Army Corps of Engineers were obtained at that time. Previous wetland impacts based on time-lapsed aerials of the parcel are shown here with the two thousand and five aerial on the left and the two thousand and nine aerial on the right. In two thousand and nineteen, an updated Florida Department of Environmental Protection jurisdictional determination identified a total of a tenth of an acre jurisdictional wetlands on site, which is part of a larger wetland system that continues off-site to the south. The Army Corps of Engineers supported the finding or the determination and issued an after-the-fact permit in two thousand and twenty. The remaining zero point three four acres of on-site habitat consists of a mowed upland area, of which zero point one acres makes up the required fifty-foot shoreline buffer. The applicant submitted a conceptual site plan with a single-family residential structure totaling two thousand three hundred and ninety-four square feet, which results in zero point zero four acres of direct fill impacts to the wetland, and the remaining development impacts are proposed within the associated fifty-foot wetland buffer. Staff determined additional avoidance and minimization of direct wetland impacts is feasible, given the additional upland present due to the previous filling of a one thousand nine hundred and sixty square foot wetland. For Comprehensive Plan Policy six point one point fourteen point three, the board may grant a waiver to impact a category-one wetland or its associated buffer when no other reasonable alternative exists, and avoidance and minimization of impacts cannot otherwise be achieved. Because reconfiguration of the proposed development is technically feasible without precluding reasonable use of the property, and it would not constitute a taking, staff could not recommend approval of the waiver request. Staff has reviewed the subject waiver request and made the following determinations. Criteria for granting a category-one wetland waiver requires avoidance and minimization of impacts to the greatest extent feasible, while still allowing reasonable use of the property. Additional avoidance and minimization of direct wetland impacts is feasible, given the additional developable upland due to the previous filling of a wetland. Staff recommended reducing the size and/or re- and/or configuration of the proposed residence to avoid direct impacts to the wetland. The applicant financially committed to final site design based on permits from the DEP and Army Corps of Engineers, and prior to receiving county approval. And therefore, the applicant contends any further avoidance and minimization would be economically unfeasible. Staff has determined this proposed site plan does not meet the avoidance and minimization criteria for category-one wetland impacts, and therefore recommends denial of the subject wetland waiver request to the Board of County Commissioners. And that concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? This is a, Commissioner Mitchell?
It just, it said that the FDIP and the Army Corps give out permits somehow in the whole process, for lack of a better word. Sorry. I said it just said that through this whole process, the FDIP, the Army Corps of Engineers grant permits, and this person, whoever this individual was, made a substantial investment in this and was told to proceed, and then we hit the roadblock here, and I just, I don't like seeing this. I don't know how we can correct this situation, but it's a lose-lose in my opinion. That's it.
Thank you. Any comments from the board?
Um, Mr. Chair, I, I have a couple of questions. The DEP and the Corps, their restrictions are a lot greater than ours, and so I, I want to know, um, in an informal, if we could have a discussion where we could take our ERD and make them all compliant with the Corps and the DEPs? Because just like Commissioner Mitchell said, the DEP and the Corps have approved this, and we're the ones stopping it, and we're at the local jurisdiction here. So, I would think that if anything, we would have approved it, the Corps, DEP would have declined it. So, I'm, I'm interested in having some conversations to bring our code and our wording into compliance so that it mirrors the Corps and the DEPs. And I'm in favor of actually passing this application.
Thank you, Commissioner Townsend.
Begin.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your last part.
No, I said, I, I, I'm in favor of moving this forward so that this gentleman can get his house built.
I just want to take us through a history lesson, and I think I see the Director of ERD coming forward, but there was a period of time in which the, the Department of DCA, I can't remember, it's since been dissolved, but DCA required us to move forward with creating some categories for wetlands. San Jose County was lenient, I guess, with creating categories one, two, and three to be able to provide for some provision for those lesser-quality wetlands in which people could build. To give an example, Martin County has zero tolerance on wetlands, and basically, if you have anything in the wa- in the way of wetland in, in Martin County, there is no building, there is no process to move forward. San Jose County has made some significant cha- changes to be able to help make that happen. Also, this property has already been impacted by nineteen hundred square feet of, of a previous wetland, and so I think that the, the opportunity to build here has been made available. What I understand, and I'll have to ask staff, is this site can be built upon, just be a, just a smaller footprint than the, than the current proposal. Is that accurate to say?
That's what we, we believe, Com- uh, Chair, Mr. Chair, yes.
And, and Amy, I see you came forward. Did you have something to share?
Well, I'm waiting for the question. Amy Griffin, Environmental Resources Department, you're absolutely correct, Commissioner. In two thousand and seven, the year process evaluation appraisal report, we were required to put into the comp plan some additional protections in wetlands greater than the state. Saint Lucy County, we're not allowed to determine the, the boundaries of the wetlands, and we're not required to, not allowed to require mitigation. However, what we do is we're able to categorize wetlands based on their value. So, category-one, twenty acres or larger or hydrologically connected. Category-two, twenty acres or larger, possibly not directly hydrologically connected. Category-three, five acres or less. So, what we did is, in the comp plan, put together a couple of policies. Any impacts whatsoever to category-one or two wetlands or their buffers have to come to you all for approval. Category-three, we're, we, we made it so that they could be administratively approved. We've only ever brought one other recommendation for denial for a category-one or two approval wetland impact to you all. And that was somebody who didn't need to, they, they, they did, they had unavoidable, they had avoidable impacts. The other ones we've brought forward with recommendation of approval, they had unavoidable impacts. They, Sunset Beach and Evanescot next door, they had to build their entrance accessway through the wetland to get to the buildable uplands. That's not the case in this wetland. It is small, it's, it's minor, but what we review it on, given the basis of review Ms. Cooper put up in that one slide, is it avoidable? Does it preclude all economic feasible use of the property? Is it a taking? In this case, no, the, the, you know, I feel Mr. Gamboa, he did invest a lot of money into getting his plans drawn up before coming to the county. And the county always tries to be incredibly reasonable, or the county. But he, he wasn't able, and he, he was able to preserve the shoreline buffer, provide all the wetland buffer he needed. He's doing a above-and-beyond septic system in the front yard, the anaerobic transpiration unit that'll cleanse the, the wastewater before it gets to the river. He's done everything he possibly can except move the house, and that's completely understandable. He's already invested the money into those plans. So, he could shift it, you know, move the, the footprint. He could reduce it, but he, he isn't, we're at an impasse, essentially. And, and so, by, by our basis of review, he's could, you know, this is not a taking, it's not a, it's not precluding him to use his property. So, that's why we had to come to you with a recommendation of a denial. We've, again, only other, only done that one other time. And again, we walked the applicants through avoidance and minimization. Dana and Mr. Gamboa have been great doing what they can within their control. Just something to think about, why we, we even have these wetland regulations different from the state. We did recently complete a University of South Florida wetland study that concludes in the last one hundred years, Saint Lucy County has lost eighty-six percent of our wetlands. So, at this point, every square foot of wetland is important. So, we, we try to attack it on this front, preserve wetlands through the regulations process. Obviously, we've recommended several approvals, so we know wetlands have to be impacted sometimes for people to use their properties. We try to approach it from the other, the lands management point of view. We're, we're working on preser- restoring a three hundred acre wetland out on Te Gammick right now. Stormwater needs places to go. Wetlands are important for attenuating and holding stormwater. And we've all seen what happens when stormwater has no place to go, because eighty-six percent of our wetlands are gone.
Well, if I could stop you for just a second, you know, the, the important, the important language that I heard in this, number one, is, is, one, it's hydrologically connected.
Yes, and, and Ms. Cooper can pull up a light, or it shows that without a reasonable doubt.
There's not, there's not a person that's ever watched these, these, these television events here that has not seen and, and had me discuss the ideas of septic tank getting to sewer. Now, that's something that we as a county need to do a better job of. The cities have to do a better job of providing those opportunities for connection. The fact that this is hydrolog- hydrologically connected to the Ten Mile Creek, which discharges into the, to the North Fork and the Saint Lucy River to our south in Martin County. There are currently thirty-eight thousand suggested, um, septic tanks along this, this waterway. So, that's one challenge that I have, first of all, but I understand that it can't be done, but using the higher-value system is appreciated. The other is the stormwater, the, the buffer from the, the river, I think is incredibly important. But the, if we're ever going to clean these, these rivers and our streams, we've got to do it one small step at a time. It's a big issue. If you, if you would have went back and looked at the maps from, you know, nineteen thirty of Port Saint Lucy, it was one big sand pile, it was one big water cleansing unit. So, so there's a reason for this, and, and I'm not going to support moving it forward for, for those reasons. It, you know, every wetland is a natural cleansing element. And, so anyway, that's, that's my thought process, and, and I'll just share, is the board have any other comments?
I do.
Commissioner Mitchell?
It just, this, it bothers me, only because this man put all his eggs in one basket financially. He was told what to do from the FDIP, from the Army Corps. And when Ms. Griffin, you made a resp- a remark, at eighty percent, we've lost of eighty-six percent of, in the last ten years, how much do you think? Where, where were we ten years ago? Had we lost eighty-five percent, we said, "We're not going to do this anymore," and we've done a good job as far as being stewards of our waterways and things of that nature.
That is a difficult answer, and I can't, a question, and I can't answer it at this moment. I can look into it. I can speculate that we lost the majority of our wetlands long before ten years ago.
Yeah.
With the canals.
Well, the point, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Yeah.
And I just, we've got to come to some kind of resolution, because although we have to support the, the laws that you have in place, this can never happen again. This man invested, he put all his eggs in one basket. You, you kept mentioning, he went above and beyond on all aspects to do it the right way, and we're denying him. And it just, something's not.
Right, it's not a recommendation we come to lightly. It's not, you know, we tried to get him to something that we could recommend approval. But again, with the direct wetland impacts, we, we just, that, that's our basis of, in the basis of review outlined in the comp plan, he, he almost got caught into the middle of this, this situation.
Well, I think it's also important to mention, to, to mention at this time, and we've put this in place a long time ago with our business navigators, our pre-application programs through planning. The pre-application program should be the very first stop that anybody does, even thinking about investing in a business anywhere. I mean, we've had, we've had somebody that wanted to do a hair salon that was in a zoned attorney's office section of, of, of the county, and they couldn't do it because it wasn't zoned properly. And so, what- And so what happens is, they get in, they think they can do whatever, but following our policies that are in place, when we do our comprehensive master plan discussions, those are the areas in which we should have these discussions. But we give an opportunity and county assets to say, look, if you want to come in, welcome, but have a pre-application process before you begin to like, look at this. We had one just off 33rd Street. They wanted to build a home in a commercial area, which was a challenge. I mean, there's dozens of things. Treetops, look at treetops. I mean, we have some things that are in place that the county is, you know, we're 100 years old, and there are things that we continue to move forward, trying to make the changes. And Commissioner Mitchell, if you'd like to bring that forward as a comprehensive plan change in the future, I think it's something you could bring forward.
It certainly is troublesome, Mr. Chairman. The same thing I'll say when people buy real estate or buy a house, that there's not a real estate agent or somebody that demands, and it's got to be law, go file for your homestead exemption. Commissioner Hutchinson and I sit on the value adjustment board, and I've seen it over the last few years where people are not aware, and to me, it's almost criminal.
Well, I can tell you that the Realtors Association provides brochures at every, that I'm familiar with anyway, of every sale, so that they can understand that. I also, as a Realtor, provided information to my clients, so.
But it's not trickling down.
Well, again, it's an education process, you're absolutely right. And the fact that Florida is different than any other states, again, if you move to Florida, you need to take, invest some time in understanding what the rules and the laws of the state of Florida are, but they are able to file their homestead the following year. I will share that I had that same situation when I first moved here, so unfortunately, I had to learn the hard way back when I first got here, so.
Mr. Chairman, coming back to today's issue on the table.
Thank you.
I actually tend to agree wholeheartedly, to be honest with you, with Commissioner Mitchell and Commissioner Townsend's comments, and I know you mentioned about going, I would think Kathy's idea, or Commissioner Townsend's idea of doing it in an informal, and let us review and go update it, because there's been a lot of changes at the state, especially since DCA, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, you know, is no longer in effect, and we have not yet gone down the road of getting into and looking at, do things need to be changed and brought up to date, or do they not? And I know that's the big picture idea of where the staff and everything wants to go to, but because of the time and COVID over these past couple of years, we've not, but I mean, we've got flood maps with a lot of changes that were made into there, into those areas. Do those, put those wetlands in jeopardy with or without, now that those flood maps are different? And so again, and you know, I'm looking at maps here that's saying it's an isolated wetland, and that's what was reported on the, on the permits with DEP, not a connected wetland. And you showed a pretty map of hydraulics on here just a minute ago, but how many of those lots are already developed? That's the part that's missing on that map. How many of those lots are already developed? How many have we've already given waivers to in that neighborhood? Because I can tell you, it's more than you think.
Right.
So, that's just, it doesn't need to be asked today, but I mean, that, because that's part of the discussion, if it's a pre-existing neighborhood that we've already historically been giving the waivers, very legitimately in front of this board, and Commissioners Zdowski, you've sat on them, and I will give you credit, you have stood by your comments with each one of them, but they have passed this board. So, that to me becomes the bigger picture. Maybe we do need to get into more of your isolated neighborhoods type of thing, and see, does this work there? This is basically a neighborhood that has been there since the 50s, you know, kind of thing, so.
Just a point of clarification, we, this isn't a public hearing, but we're doing disclosures, and perhaps you intended to do this, but I think we do need to give the applicant a chance to present to the board, and at least give them an opportunity to present their position so that the board can consider that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Small, welcome to our little discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Dana Small, 1901 Southwest Yellotail, Port St. Lucie, DLS Environmental Services, as you, I've met with you all, and I think your discussion is, is something that certainly needs to occur at some point. I do want to make one minor correction, because Martin County does have in their codes where they do allow up to 4,000 square feet of impacts for wetlands for loss of reasonable use. So, that's loss of reasonable use, is kind of something similar to what we're dealing with here. But, so, as I met with you all, he has significant investment in this, and yes, he did not do it step by step and come to the county first, you know, because everybody says, oh, state and federal, you have to go to the state and federal first, you know, that's your first stop, and that's what probably, I know it's an ideal world where somebody goes to the county first and says, hey, can I do this? But I would have to say, in my experience, 90% of people hear about going to the state and county first, I mean, the state and federal first, because they're the big government agencies, and that's where they go to first, unfortunately, and then they kind of get stuck, like Mr. Gamboa did, where he spent significant design money, and for him to redesign his house, reconfigure his house, to avoid the wetland impacts, now becomes a financial hardship on him that he cannot, he can't do it. I mean, he's, he's out of, he's not made of cash, he's, this is not a neighborhood where you put in a McMansion, and he's not proposing a pool, I mean, he's really proposing a fairly small imprint, footprint of, of whether it's a house or driveway, everything. So, like I said, it's not an unreasonable thing that he went forward and thought, the only thing I have to worry about is state and federal, because that's always the big ones out there that people mention. Well, ignorance is not an excuse, but unfortunately, because of that, his limitations on finances, as we're here today, it's presenting a hardship for him to try to think about spending money to redesign the house. He can't do it, he'd have to probably sell the property, because that's just a financial burden he can't, he can't go forward with. I just have a few things in my notes, because I did review the, like, the square footage of, for the property to the south, Avinesco, Avinesco, I kind of thought, wow, that's kind of spread out. And to me, that spread out was not reducing wetland impacts, so I looked at the square footage of the house, this is all wetlands, 1,500 square foot house, 484 square foot carport, 256 square foot shed, and they're all in separate areas, and I thought, well, in my mind, Mr. Gamboa's consolidating, you know, he's right there as compact as he can be, and, you know, to minimize wetland impacts. And so, I think in the, you know, once you take out the shoreline protection zone, or the buffer from the river, I don't know what you guys call it up here. You know, he's, he's not left with a huge property, if you take that out, and you take the wetlands out, he's left, left with less than a quarter acre of property to do his drive, his anaerobic treatment unit and drain field, and some sort of house, so it really starts squeezing it. And then, of course, we have proposed to put everything under preservary management plan, so he can't get a future pool. He is restoring the native vegetation of all the remaining area, and so what we've really tried to do, like I said, is minimize any impacts to these wetlands, and I know all wetlands are important, but I'll tell you what, this is a Brazilian pepper swampy nasty thing. So as far as functions that it's providing, other than stormwater recharge, I would have to say, it's not. It's not providing, you know, we usually rate wetlands on quality of habitat, and this is not one that's providing that quality of habitat for, whether it's fauna or flora, but there's always a stormwater recharge benefit for wetlands, so you can't take that away, but it is, it is not a quality wetland. Connected, but it's not a quality wetland whatsoever, it's a Brazilian pepper mess. So, he's, like I said, doing everything to restore the property and put native vegetation on it, and minimize what impacts, just recognizing that he can't afford to redesign the house. And so I hope everyone takes that into account and gives him the benefit of a doubt that, you know, the waiver process is in place for a reason, and this certainly is a reason to apply, to approve the waiver. Okay?
Can I just, you just said that it wasn't a quality wetland, but in your own report on 4.3, paragraph 4.3, you designated it as a category one wetland.
Okay, so your categories are not relative to quality of wetland. The way they're set up, they're just set up strictly by connectivity or hydrologic connection. They don't talk about the habitat that that wetland is supporting. Is that wetland supporting native wetland vegetation? Is it supporting the normal flora and fauna that come with these wetlands? And when I talk about quality of wetland, I'm not talking about connection, I'm talking about what's actually physically on the ground, as far as what animals are utilizing that wetland, what type of vegetation that wetland has, and is that considered a medium quality, high quality, low quality wetland? And with the state and federal, there are, there's a mechanism in which they rate a wetland, and it's called, where you take into account, you look at different categories, you look at the adjacent surrounding areas, you look at the plants and the species utilizing the wetland, and then, so it's habitat surrounding areas, actual vegetation flora and fauna that are utilizing the wetland, wetland utilization, and then there's one other category, and you go through those, and you rank each one based upon how natural or native, I'm going to have to say native, because we have natural Brazilian pepper wetlands, but how native a wetland is, and whether it's supporting the fauna and flora that it's supposed to. And if you use that sort of ranking, this one would be like a one, because it doesn't have any of those qualities. So it's, it's not a, based upon solely connectivity, it looks at the big picture of the wetland and all the different things that a wetland can provide.
So, is there, is there, there's a situation in which those peppers are going to be removed, right?
He has to remove them, yeah, because it's exotic removal.
So that would change some of that termination.
Yeah, I mean, as provided, you can't replant in there, because most of the time there is standing water, so it's going to be kind of like, keep your fingers crossed that something good comes in, but I would assume with that and the property to the south, now, the property to the south is building really close to the property line, it looks like from the fill things I saw, pretty close, like as far as their fill area, maybe five, 10 feet. So it's going to be limited in what it would naturally recruit as far as vegetation and what it might support at that point because of that cutoff from the south. You know, you've got a connecting culvert that's going to connect it still with the property to the south of him, but now you've only got a culvert connecting, and you've got a little bit of wetland going on, so you're, the functionality of that wetland, because of the impacts that have been approved for the south, are going to be very limited.
Okay, well, we seem to be going over the same information now, so I think I'll bring it back if you, unless you had something further.
No, no, I'm, yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? This is a regular hearing, so don't have public discussion, so what's the role of the board?
Madam Chair, Mr. Chair.
We have a staff recommendation of denial, just so you know, I just wanted to make sure.
I apologize, say that again?
I said, in the staff report, it says it's a staff recommendation of denial of the waiver.
Yes, sir, I see that, but I'd like to make a motion that because his home plans have been done, they're minimizing the impacts to the wetlands, there's been other waivers issued into neighboring properties, that I would like to make a motion to move approval for him to be able to get a permit to move forward.
There's a motion by Townsend, you've heard it, is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions on that item? I've been clear about my position since I've been here, and trying to rectify the challenges and the sins of the past, I will not be supporting this today. That being said, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Barts?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I would also like to go ahead and put this on an informal meeting to bring it forward, so that we could have this conversation, to maybe look at some things as well, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. All right, thank you, everybody, for the spirited discussion. All right, moving on to item B3. And for the public's knowledge, this is a targeted industry that San Jose County has been attempting to secure, while this is a building in a spec, the expectations of a future leasehold will be coming in after the fact, but we'll leave that up to staff and to the applicant. Who's going to start?
I'll start.
Okay.
Chairman Zdowski, members of the Commission, Leslie Olson, Planning and Development Services Director for the record, just want to, just want to just introduce our great staff and this applicant. This is a targeted industry, it's more than half a million square feet of distribution in North County, so what I really want you all to know, and anyone watching today, is that St. Lucie County is definitely on the map, due to the work of this board, the work of our partners, the EDC, our staff, we definitely have people lining up to take advantage of our great location here in St. Lucie County, midway between South Florida and the Central Florida Growth Machine. And so we have this large distribution site, and our business navigator, Thandra Lannice, and Jody Netwick, our senior planner, have been working very closely with the applicant to move them forward very, very quickly. Weekly meetings, making sure that they get in, get through, and can get moving. Please expect to see coming up soon another project adjacent to this one twice as large. So, with that, I'll give that, I'll give the floor to Jody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, and members of the Commission. Again, for the record, my name is Jody Netwick, Senior Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. Also, I would like to introduce our business navigator, Thandra Lannice. This morning, we will be presenting Agenda Item 10B3, a petition for a major site plan for King's Highway Warehouse, to develop a 658,000-square-foot warehouse and distribution center. This project is classified as a targeted industry within St. Lucie County. The project facilities facilitates employment opportunities, increases Avalon tax revenue, and expands local warehouse distribution activities within our targeted industry category. This is an aerial showing the subject property outlined in red. The undeveloped parcel of land consists of 67.11 acres overall, and located on the east side of King's Highway, just south of Orange Avenue. The future land use designation is mixed-use development within the Orange Avenue I-95 mixed-use activity area. The proposed project is consistent for high-intensity industrial uses within the comprehensive The subject property is designated by the Light Industrial Zoning District. This is the overall proposed site planning, site plan outlining the 658,000-square-foot warehouse distribution building in blue. To the north is the existing Love's Travel Center. To the south is undeveloped agricultural land, and to the east is the I-95 corridor, and to the west is the First Source Industrial Commercial Park. This project will not be built in any phases. The proposed architectural is tilt-wall construction, which is defined as a method of constructing concrete walls in which the slabs are cast in horizontal position and then tilted up. in which the slabs are cast in horizontal position and then tilted up. This is the proposed elevation to the east facing I-95. And this is the proposed elevation facing King's Highway. Additionally, the application, the applicant is installing a screen wall along the south property line and fountains within the retention ponds. This diagram demonstrates the project driveway volumes during AM and PM peak times and daily trips in both driveway connections along the King's Highway corridor. The proposed south driveway is to be assessed, accessed by full access connection in one right end, one right out on, on King's Highway. The existing full access connection to the north is served by an Ingrass right end turn and Ingrass left turn in, turn lane. Based on the proposed volumes at the right end, right out driveway, an Ingrass right turn lane is also proposed at the south driveway. In accordance with the results of the traffic impact analysis, all roadway segments projected to operate exceptionally upon build-out of the project. The study intersections are proposed to operate exceptionally through build-out of the project with improvements made as part of the FDOT King's Highway Widening Project and optimize signal timing. The proposed build-out is to end on 2026. Before moving to our staff recommendation, I would like to again introduce Ms. Lanis to explain what it means to be a targeted industry within St. Lucie County and also some of the unique ways that we were able to mitigate the tree, alternative tree mitigation on this particular site.
Good morning, Chair Zdowski and Commissioners Thandra Lanis, business navigator for the record. This project represents the successful transition of former groveland to unincorporated St. Lucie County's largest distribution center to date. At 658,000 square feet, it is also the second largest project that we have done in the county to date, second only to the multi-phase expansion at Pursuit Boats. With the accompanying economic and job creation benefits for residents, we often talk about the targeted industry designation and how tools like incentives and the expedited review can translate to economic opportunity for our residents. This project is also an example of how the economic development partnerships work to make projects like this possible while enhancing our overall quality of life. What I'd like to highlight is the partnerships and proactive problem solving that gets activated when we designate an applicant as a targeted industry. From our initial discussions with Jill Marassa and Pete Tesh at the Economic Development Council about this site as they were shopping at two prospective developers, to the weekly status meetings and status reports that Jody and I provided to the team at Kinley Horn, to the creative mitigation solution developed by Amy Griffin's team in Environmental Resources, it's been a real pleasure to see these effective partnerships at work. The proactive analysis by all team members identifies potential obstacles and solutions before they become problems. And it helps us to not only do a faster review process, but it helps us to identify these things before they're issues, find creative solutions, and keep the communication going that has made the county very attractive to developers. In particular, I'd like to highlight the mitigation solution that was brought forward by then Environmental Regulation Manager Jen McGee because it's a great example of how projects like this one work to help the county and its applicants achieve shared goals. As we were working through the tree mitigation required for this project, which was substantial, Jen suggested an alternative mitigation solution in our code that would allow the applicant to make a cash contribution toward the acquisition of environmentally significant lands purchased. The land identified is the Jenkins Road and Ten Mile Creek property that was reviewed by the St. Lucie County Land Acquisition Selection Committee last February and approved for purchase by the Board of County Commissioners in August. The two parcels totaling 39 acres off of Jenkins Road, south of Edwards Road, span from I-95 to Jenkins Road along the north side of Ten Mile Creek and connect to the George Lestrange Preserve. The property offers 17 acres of native habitat as well as environmental preservation, water quality, connectivity, recreation, and resiliency opportunities. Mitigation funds from the King's Highway Warehouse project that you're reviewing today will work with the future Jenkins Road Extension Project and the Environmentally Significant Lands Program to cover the purchase of that property benefiting both the developer and the county. While today's agenda item is the culmination of weeks of collaborative planning, it is just the start of an ongoing partnership through construction, the opening of this facility, and the hiring of employees. Staff, our partners at the Development Review Committee and the Economic Development Council of St. Lucie County are very pleased to recommend approval of this major site plan subject to the seven conditions of approval identified in the draft resolution. This does end our presentation, but at this time, we would like to acknowledge that Paul Seafried and Clay Thompson of Seafried Industrial Properties, who are joining us virtually today, also joining us in the room from Kinley Horn and Associates, our project manager Jason Lewis, Stephanie Kinlan, and Brianna Room.
Thank you. For the applicants, is there anything you'd like to share?
Hi, this is Clay Thompson speaking with Seafried Properties, a developer on the project. I just wanted to take the time to say what an absolute pleasure it was to work with the St. Lucie County staff. It was a great teamwork effort to get to this point. We're really excited to be at St. Lucie County. Really excited to continue this partnership for, and appreciate everybody's time and effort to get this project to this point. And we're very excited, thank you again.
Thank you, and I, again, one sort of thing, I just wanted to say thank you for being, you know, environmentally responsible in how we found an opportunity to find solutions. And that's one of the things that we've been trying to do in St. Lucie County is how do we get to yes? Whether it's compromise, or whether it's mitigation, or whether it's some other outside-the-box thinking. And I think that that's going to help us prevent ourselves from becoming South Florida by still maintaining our green space and, and our tree canopies. So, good evening or morning, I guess.
Yeah, good morning. I just wanted to echo what Clay said, this is Jason Lewis, Kinley Horn and Associates. Staff's been great to work with through the process, helping us out, get to this point. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
And what is your name, James Lewis?
Jason Lewis.
Jason Lewis, okay, all right, thank you. All right, any other questions from the board?
I don't have a question, Mr. Chair, but if you would like to accept a motion, I'd motion, make, move approval.
Second.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, seconds, motion by Hutchinson, second by Bartz, and six more seconds. That being said, please, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am. And again, I'd like to recognize the Economic Development Council team is here through their guidance and opportunities to find solutions. Again, from the pre-application standpoint, from our business navigator, Thandra, and then of course, you know, the, the support staff that makes these opportunities all happen. So I just wanted to recognize everybody for their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Looks as though we've come to the end of our agenda. Anything from the board?
I have a couple of questions.
Commissioner Townsend?
I need an update on where we are with the Hangar RFP. Have, have the, I know it's closed, have they been reviewed as to the people that have submitted and where we are with, with that, and an update on the industrial side off King's Highway?
It is now exiting.
Where we are with that. And I also would like an update on where we are with adjusting the urban service boundaries. Is that gonna be brought up at another informal soon? Jobs have done a great job, but we need houses for the employees to live in.
Okay, two things, Ms. Stan is not in the audience today.
I can give you an update on the Hangar RFP. We've identified the staff selection committee, and so they are beginning their efforts to review the documents and meet with the potential applicants. The second item, I, I don't have an update on, but I would make sure that we get one out there.
Mr. Chair, can I ask that update that the commission mentions, that make sure all of us get it, please?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, so Commissioner Townsend?
On, on the staff selection with the RFPs, is it gonna be kind of, gonna make a recommendation, but we'll interview all the applicants and then the board will have the final decision? Or will staff be making the selection and then it'll just come to us for approval?
Believe that the way that it has been set up is that the staff will be doing the interviews and making a recommendation for the board's approval, but the board can absolutely interview the applicants as well.
Okay, I would like to have a copy of anybody that has submitted with the RFP so I can see who all has submitted and look at them, please.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so for staff's sake, there's a few items in there for updates, so our next informal meeting, if we can kind of work out the agenda as long as we don't have a nine-hour informal, if we can break it up if it's, if it's too long.
Yes.
All right, any other comments from the board, oops, Leslie?
Commissioner Townsend had asked for an USB update.
Yes, yes, okay.
So we're ready to bring that forward to another informal based on availability, so we, we can do that as soon as you'd like.
Okay, Mr. Townsend, is that okay?
That's perfect, thank you, Leslie.
All right, any other comments from the board? Mr. Tipton, do you have some announcements?
Yes, sir, just to share that we have our final budget hearing on Thursday, September 23rd at 6:00 PM here in these chambers. The board is planning to hold a special meeting on Tuesday, September 27th. I think that's actually Monday, September 27th. There's a chance that that meeting may be canceled, but at this point, we would, we would open up the meeting because it has been advertised if it gets to that point. This is the, kind of the single item agenda regarding a development and PGA reserve. And then our next, excuse me, our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, October 5th.
Okay, I just wanted to take the time. San Luis County has been incredibly fortunate that we've been found from the sports world. Our partnership with Visit St. Lucie and the Treasure Coast Sports Commissioner, Play Treasure Coast, has, most of you remember that the Olympic baseball qualifiers were done at Clover Park in conjunction with Port St., I mean, with, in Port St. Lucie, with Palm Beach. And it was very successful based on the numbers that we were seeing from the tourism numbers during that period of time. Since then, again, San Luis County has been recognized for their ability to bring in major events. Like to announce today, it's been in the paper, but to, for those listening, the Firefighter Combat Challenge World Championship has been redirected from South Florida to Fort Pierce. That will happen on November 2nd through November 6th. We will be, it's a quick turnaround for us, there's some challenges on the venue in, in, in South Florida. But because we were the national championship location several years ago, a lot of the, most of the contestants wanted to come back to Fort Pierce in San Luis County for all the wonderful reasons. So we'll be looking for volunteers and sponsors if we can achieve that. And it'll be held at, in Fort Pierce downtown at the Backus Gallery in the Manatee Center parking lot. You may have seen some of it. If you haven't seen what the Firefighter Combat Challenge is, please go and Google it and see some of the, the great videos that are out there. And as an aside, Madam Chair of the Fire District, your team actually is the, the current standing world champion Firefighter Combat Challenge team.
And we'll continue that. Can, excuse me, Mr. Chair, can you repeat those dates for the public, please?
Sure, upcoming November 2nd through the 3rd, 4th will be the actual wildcard competitions. And then on the 5th and the 6th will actually be the world championship element. So from November 2nd through November 6th of this year, and they'll be setting up on November 1st if you want to see what's going on. We have Friday Fest happening at that same time. We have the Navy SEAL muster, so a lot of exciting things will be happening that week. So it's a great time to make your reservations at hotels in St. Lucie County and come to visit.
The other question is if they wish to volunteer?
They can call my office at 772-462-1410. That's 772-462-10... 1410.
What is your number again, for one more time?
867-5309.
462-1410, oh man, anyway, anyway, okay, there we go.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll come to order St. Lucie County Erosion District. First on the agenda is general public comment. Seeing none, we'll move to the approval of August 17th, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in this by Commissioner Mitchell and seconded by Commissioner Bartz. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am. Moving to today's consent agenda, if there's no questions or concerns, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by Commissioner Bartz. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am, there is no regular agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We'll call together the Mosquito Control District meeting of Tuesday, September 21st. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I'll approve a motion to approve the minutes of the August 17th, 2021 minute. So moved. We have a motion by Mr. Chairman Zdowski, seconded by, was it Chairman Bartz? Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Good job, yes, ma'am. We have the warrants agenda, if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve. We have a motion by Commissioner Zdowski, seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Bartz, Madam Chair, please call the roll.
Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am, and we have the county attorney.
That was the consent agenda, was it not?
Oh, okay, rolled on. There are no other items scheduled, we have a motion to adjourn.
Semit. Okay, we come together, Sustainability District, open public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one, closed public comment. There are no minutes to approve. Consent agenda?
Move approval.
Okay, I'm not sure which was the first and the second, but...
Commissioner Hutchinson was first, I was second.
Okay, thank you. There are no items on the regular agenda? Call the vet.
Call the question.
Call the roll.
You didn't call the vet. Oh, I apologize. That's okay. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Bartz?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, there are no items on the regular agenda?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you very much.